Good evening and welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm going to ask, is there any agenda changes?
Steph, I have none to present this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, next I'll open up for public forum. If there's anybody here wishing to address the council, now is the time. Seeing no movement from the gallery, I'll close the public forum and go on and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, if there's no discussion, I move to approve the consent agenda for November 10, 2025 as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That carries. No public hearing tonight, no unfinished business, so let's move right on into new business. Item one is Kansas Learning Center for Health 2025 funding request. I believe Cory's here to address the council. We're trying to get you guys in and out tonight.
Well, this is a lot more vacant than it was last time. I was expecting a full crowd. Oh, I think that there are two. Hold on, my mistake. It's the coffee machine. Oh, no, no, no. Where's my second page? Okay, there it is. I've got two pages that go with this. The first is the program description, and then the page right behind it, it looks like, is the budget request for the $10,000. Hello, I am Cory Edwards. I have got, first of all, let me do a recap of Megan, the inflatable that we did at Old Settlers. The inflatable brought in a whopping almost 600 people to that inflatable exhibit. And so that is more than any other, when I reported that back to the company that produces the inflatables in Texas, that is the most people that has run through any of their inflatables. And so they really could not believe what a town of this size had to, had to offer when we, when we put out that inflatable. So kudos to Halsted for the remarkable turnout, but I just wanted you all to know that we had almost 600 people that went through that inflatable. So thank you for the funding for that, that satisfied, that satisfied the outdoor classroom. And so that, that's the report out for that. So this is my next request. We're going to take a different turn. This is for development and not really development. So the Women's Foundation out of Heston has provided $3,000 already for us to develop the curriculum for this program. This is senior programming. We have had quite a bit of interest in the Halsted community already for some senior programming. We have, we do receive periodically, and especially during the summer months, I started in June, and can attest to the fact that we receive calls and did receive calls over the summer from Hutchinson, Newton, Heston for some senior programming. And so that led me to the Senior Center. Actually, it led me to the United Methodist Church Senior Lunch that they have monthly. And so I went over and had a chance to talk with those folks. And there, there is a need in Halsted for some senior programming. And so reached out to the Women's Community Foundation, and they funded $3,000 for us to develop some, to develop the programming for this. So we are in the midst right now of developing four modules. So what we would like to do, and what we would like to spend this money on, is for participant funding. Over the next year, we would like to, to use this money to pay for participants to use our programming that we develop, and it would be onsite. It would utilize outdoor and indoor, all of the things that we have to offer at the center. It would utilize our outdoor exercise equipment. It would utilize our garden space. And then everything that we have to offer upstairs in the exhibit hall and downstairs in, in the current center. It's a large center, and we're gonna, we're gonna use every square inch of it for our senior programming, including our kitchen. And we're going to collaborate with the Harvey County Extension Office to do some, some serious programming for our seniors. We would like to pilot this with, with the, the Senior Center, and we've got a lot of buy-in for this. And so this is what I would like to do for, for this amount of money. And so I hope that, that my, my budget is pretty self-explanatory. And, and the group that I have met with, including the Senior Center Board, is, is pretty pumped about this. And I think that this is kind of the next step with the Learning Center, and, and the board, of course, has already signed off on this, and kind of keeping the Learning Center relevant as far as our programming and kind of keeping us, you know, on the cutting edge of what's next for the Learning Center, not just for students, but for folks of all ages.
How do you budget typically when you wanting to start a program like this? Like, is that, are you also contributing some of your own, like, Learning Center funds to a program like this? Is that something that you build within your budget, or would you solely be, like, asking for these funds from us in that aspect?
Oh, no. So, so the, the Women's Community Foundation was, was who we, we wrote to for supplies and equipment. So this, this budget includes, when you kind of break it down, it's basically, like I said, $6.25 per session. And, and that really is almost kind of our, it's, I mean, you know, $6.25, that's kind of our, you know, Halsted's, the City of Halsted's piece of it, and then our almost in-kind. We've got two staff members that are really dedicated to this. One has got a degree in physical education, and they're very invested in senior citizen wellness. And so he is pretty devoted to this. And then the other staff person is Chelsea Graber, and she was the one who kind of put all of this together. And so when I think of staffing, I, I think of, so the Women's Community Foundation, that grant will, will pay for the majority of the staffing costs. The $10,000 really is, is mainly just paying, in my mind, you know, to kind of keep the lights on, if you will. It's $6.25, you know, for 25 people to just kind of be there. So, and when I look at 25 people, that we thought was kind of the max capacity at one time that we could maneuver in the building. And we do believe that with the, with the wide range of interests that we have, we will have no problem getting those 25 people. I mean, we'll have, we'll have, we'll probably end up running a waiting list at this point.
Thank you.
Ethan, historically, what's our annual contribution been to the Learning Center?
10,000.
And this is basically just how you're going to use this year's annual contribution, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's built into our budget correctly. I've thought of it.
I just wanted to be clear that this is just the use of the annual contribution that we generally always make and not something in addition to.
Sure.
And then it would be based on a first come, first served, whoever signs up first would get, would be eligible for the?
Yeah, and I mean, again, you know, Denise, I think our, our hope is, our hope is that, so these four programs are not, they're not consecutive. And so my hope is that, you know, if one, I'll just use Mary Jo Hall, for instance. I mean, if Mary Jo signed up for Program Module One, and then we have got waiting lists for Program Module Two, Three, and Four, but Mary Jo, you know, is first in line for Program Two, but we've got a waiting list. I would want people other than, I'm picking on Mary Jo, I would want people other than just Mary Jo to have dibs on that program. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so we're talking about 100, 100 people in the community, 100 different people in the community.
I, I would like, exactly.
Four times.
Exactly.
So it'll, it's one program that's going to be administered four different times?
Um, no. No. No, we do have four distinct programs. Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
But I do want to, because of the interests that we have seen, I do want to give everyone a chance at getting into at least, you know, one of the programs, not just seeing 25 of the first come for, just because they have gotten at the front of the line. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I do.
I'd like to thank you for bringing this opportunity. I mean, I, there's not a day go by, we know that, I know this for sure, that you go by there and don't see a school bus from some other town. So to have the opportunity for it to be more localized, that's, and I know that you're all over Kansas, and that's the point of the whole center, but.
Sounds like Jim's gonna sign up.
But you never know, I may need to. But I appreciate you bringing, bringing this type of idea up, so.
Thanks, Jim.
Are there any more questions? If there's no further questions or discussions, I make a motion to approve the annual budget allocation to the Kansas Learning Center for Health for an amount not to exceed 10,000.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the annual 10K contribution to the Kansas Learning Center for Health. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That carries. Thank you, Cory, for telling us about the program.
I applaud the center for taking this on.
Thank you.
Long time overdue.
Yes, and for thinking out, and I hate this phrase, thinking.
Thinking outside of the box.
But taking a different approach, a different angle, and looking at different uses for that space. And because it's really, I mean, we've done, I've done everything there from having my kids in Girl Scouts to, you know, the schools and everything, so it's, it's.
It's a remarkable space. And, and you know, when I, when I walked in in June for the interview, and I looked around, I was just blown away. And I thought, you know, this, it's a remarkable space.
And we may not have a hospital and a clinic anymore, but I think it speaks very well to that legacy that we had here for 100 years. So I think it's, I think it's a good idea.
Well, and, and this is very exciting. We're pretty, we're pretty excited. And, and I'll tell you, it, the reaction was just overwhelming when, when we talked to the seniors about this. And so, and that, that was all I needed. That was all I needed to move forward. And so then I was like, okay, I, I know whose money to use for that. I, I just knew. And then when the Women's Foundation came on, I thought, okay, I really think we're on to something. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Cory.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda this evening is a special event application for the Christmas Jingle. I believe Macy Mueller's here to tell us about that.
Hi, all. I know most of you, but for the record, I'm Macy Mueller, and I'm the Associate Director of the Halsted Community Foundation. And I'm just here this evening to present our special event permit for the Christmas Jingle on Saturday, December 6. What I submitted was very similar to what was submitted last year, and the event is set up very similarly with a few exceptions. We have a few additions this year. The first one, just being some additional activities for families to enjoy. We've been really trying to focus, since we do partner with the Chamber on this event, we have been trying to focus on bringing in more business activity. And so we're going to start off the afternoon with a cocoa crawl and encouraging our local businesses to offer samples of their favorite cocoa to, to the community members who come through. They'll, the community members will be able to get like a passport stamped at the different businesses and then turn that in for prizes at the end of the afternoon. And again, just another way to bring in some of our businesses on Main Street. We do have the horse-drawn carriage rides again this year, and those are sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce. This year, we are planning to route them through Riverside Park, where we hope to have all of the tree, we plan to have all of the trees lit up with lights. And so it'll just be kind of a new route that they'll get to take. And many of the other activities will remain the same. So we do not have any street closures in this event, but we do ask special permission to play Christmas music for the evening. It added a lot last year and had a lot of nice comments about it, so wanted to include that in there. And then my permit also just includes special use of the park for the, kind of the holiday season. We plan on starting to install those Christmas lights this week, and it'll just kind of be a, an ongoing process for the next couple of weeks. And then we'll, I've been using the term flip the switch on December 6 there at the Christmas Jingle. So I'll be happy to answer any questions about the, the application or the event itself.
Sounds fun. I'm kind of looking forward to the cocoa crawl myself.
Any adult cocoa?
Well, I did get confirmation that Riz's was going to participate, so that'll be up to Steve. Yes. No, it should be a lot of fun. And again, this has been such a fun family tradition that we've had in our community for many, many years, and we're just looking for small incremental ways to continue to grow it each year. And so I think the few new activities we have planned will, we really well received.
There is no further discussion. Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the special event application for the Christmas Jingle.
Second.
We have a motion and a couple of seconds to approve the special permit application for the Christmas Jingle. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That carries.
Fantastic. Thank you very much. And I just want to say a special thank you to the city staff who's been working with us on figuring out how to get the lights installed in the park. And everyone's just been very, very helpful. And looking forward to this week. We're gonna, we'll see how it goes. We're just gonna get it started. And yeah, so look forward to seeing you guys at the Jingle on the 6th. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming in, Macy.
Thanks, Macy.
Okay, next item under new business. SRTS, Safe Routes to School Phase One Construction Contracts. Boy, it seems like we've been waiting a long time to get to this point.
Indeed. So in your packet this evening was the required paperwork from Kansas Department of Transportation, or KDOT, for our Safe Routes to School Project Phase One Improvements. The, the big things to note, one, we are required to fill out this and send it back to KDOT if we want to participate. So this is kind of your last off-ramp if you do not want to pursue this project. If we do pursue the project, though, we will be remitting $136,000 to KDOT, and that represents our 20% share of the total anticipated cost for the project, which came in at $678,227. And yeah, we need to get this to them by the end of this week, and that will keep this project rolling. And hopefully, our next step after this paperwork gets all signed and approved would be actually meeting with the contractor and finally getting some anticipated construction dates.
You know how many total feet of sidewalk are in this first phase?
I do not off the top of my head.
Be curious to have that number. And this is all five and six-foot wide sidewalk?
Mm-hmm. Mostly five, I believe.
Just on the one side of the street, right?
Yeah, so it would be all, the north side of Sixth Street from Spruce all the way to West Street. And then a little bit north of, or Chestnut, from a little bit north of Sixth Street, kind of right there at the Methodist Church, all the way south to Tenth Street along Chestnut. And then also includes the road diet of Sixth Street. So Sixth Street will go from the current undersized four-lane to two dedicated bike lanes, a middle turn lane, and then just two traditional lanes, but those will all be sized appropriately. The crosswalks will get updated with signage. We'll actually move the crosswalk that's over, kind of there in front of the high school. That will go to Santa Fe based on traffic patterns of kids when we did that inventory. And then we will also put rapid flashing beacons. I know a lot of people have been concerned at Seventh and Chestnut that that yellow light came down. That will actually have a dedicated rapid flashing beacon. So the signage where kids can actually hit the button, and it will light up when kids are crossing there. And that crosswalk will also be redone and straightened out. So that's kind of a, a broad scope of everything.
Be nice to get this work started finally.
Even as cold as it was this morning, there are still people walking in the street.
Yeah.
And we're talking 6:00 to 6:20. That's, that's amazing. Sure like get them on the sidewalks. When did we start this thing?
We, I think originally got, I believe I put that in there.
Six years ago.
July of 2022 is when we actually got the notice of award. And so since that time, yeah, we dealt with some rideaway issues that came up that we weren't anticipating and some things like that. And that's why it is a slightly larger match overall. Originally, we anticipated about 100 to 110 would be our share. So we did see a bit of an increase, but actually, most of that's on the construction engineering and inspection side. It wasn't so much on construction itself.
That's when we got the first grant for the 60K for the preliminary engineering?
Oh, no, the one to even do the plan development was 2019, I believe, when we got to actually develop the plan itself.
I think it was about six years.
Yeah, committee put that together. We had a community meeting at the Learning Center for Health where citizen input and reps from the school. And it was, it was involved process. It's still on the city website. I mean, people can check it out. Because hopefully, we'll look at Phase Two now that we've got Phase One kind of moving forward to where we want it to be.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the authority to award contract and commitment of city fund documentation from the Kansas Department of Transportation related to the Safe Routes to School Project, 040 TE-0520-01, and authorization for staff and governing body signatures on the pledge, on the pledging of $136,000 in matching funds, city, in matching local city funds for the project.
Second.
I'm gonna shorten this up. We've got a motion and a second to approve the SRTS Phase One Improvement Project per the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That carries. Next item on the agenda is East Alley Repairs for the 300 block of Main and Spruce Streets.
Thank you. The east alley there, basically, the alley that runs behind former Presbyterian Church, Halsted Bank, Charleston and Heritage, if you've been down that alley, the, the concrete there, as it is, a paved alley, has deteriorated rapidly. Some of that is just due from a former utility cut and the wear and tear on that cut and that temporary repair. While we had a contractor here, we did have them look to get that repaired. Pat, I don't know if you want to make any other comments about.
There's not any specific questions, but you had key points.
We have received several complaints, especially, you know, in the last year, on the condition of that alley and the continued deterioration of the concrete. So this would repair mostly the north end of that alley. The south end down by the Presbyterian Church is still in relatively good condition, but kind of right there behind Charleston and, and the bank and GMD is pretty torn up, as the pictures show. So this would be replacing all that, getting it repaved.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve repairs to the 300-block East Alley between Main and Spruce Streets for a project cost not to exceed $18,000.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve repairs for the 300-block of Main and Spruce Street Alley, the East Alley. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That carries. Next item on the agenda is the municipal pool, patching and painting. It just seems like we're spending money tonight.
Yeah, a lot of winter maintenance. So Grant sends his apologies. He is out, so we could not be here to present this for you all. But he solicited three quotes, basically, for sandblasting and repainting of the interior of the pool now that it's drained. The last major project we did for that was in 2020. So this is just required maintenance to keep the pool and the surface in good repair. The low bid was from Ashton Kate Construction. It's a Kansas-based company. I will note that we did ask, even though all the contractors came and toured the site, and the bids ranged from $24,450 to a high of $37, or just shy of $38,000. We did build some contingency just in case there's any, you know, a couple additional spots that maybe weren't noticed the first time or that, where they have to do some additional patching.
You know what this cost us in 2020 to do? Be curious to know.
Oh, we paid a lot more in 2020, but that was pretty extensive, and we also rehabbed the slide at that time.
Okay, I knew there was some additional work.
Like an $80,000 project back then. But this, Ashton Kate has good references from other pools they've worked with, and most importantly, they can get the work done before our pool season here in 2026, so.
This amount includes additional above?
Mm-hmm.
All right, motion to approve, or make a motion to approve the quote from Ashton Kate Construction for preparation, painting, and deck scam replacement of the swimming pool for an amount not to exceed $28,000 to be paid from the 2026 financial year funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the $28,000 worth of maintenance repairs to the municipal swimming pool. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. That carries. Next item, Highway 50 billboard multi-year renewal.
Thank you. I apologize. There was an error on the contract when they sent it to us originally, so it was not in your packet, but it is a handout there. You can see, and I'll just note, that top section, that is the cost to replace all the vinyls. If the city would do that, those costs would not be incurred if we keep the current vinyl. They are just recommending, because of the age, that the city at least consider it. But two years ago, we came because those billboards became available to advertise the city and various community events. We have the right of first refusal, since we are the current leaseholders on those two billboards. And so this is their proposed renewal contract, which essentially increased $10 a month for each subsequent year that we have it. So you have the total cost over, you know, would just be, just over $20,000 for the two years. So it basically equates to about $5,000 a billboard per year. We'll note that differs slightly from your agenda memo, but that's because they went off 13 service periods. And we were going off 12 with year, but it, they include the one year, so that's why they're 13. Or the same month you get that starts it is your end month, so that's why it's 13 service periods. But this was a trial thing that the council wanted to do two years ago, coming out of the strategic plan and saying Halsted needed more advertising of various events and things. They have been well received, at least feedback that staff have got, even from outside parties that have been on Highway 50. You know, at various conferences, they're like, oh, you know, have noticed the billboards, and that Halsted has some visibility that we did not have before on Highway 50. So it is up to you all whether you want to continue this or not.
It's pretty effective marketing. It gets, it has a big audience going both directions. It gets it has a big audience going both directions.
It'd be nice if we had some way to measure that, but I know there's no way.
I bet you could.
Say Lamar's estimates, I believe, is that um there's over twenty-two thousand weekly impressions, so that's, yeah.
How much based on traffic flow?
Based on the traffic flows on fifty.
Yeah, so that's a buck per sighting approximately. Oh, no, that'd be less than that.
Twenty-two thousand a week.
Yeah, twenty that twenty-two thousand a week, so yeah. That's pretty cheap advertising.
It's better than the two signs sitting out there with absolutely nothing on them, cause we remember that.
Yeah, or or the gun shows or the other things that really don't affect our community at all.
Nothing to do with our community.
Yeah. Is there any further discussion or questions? Alright, if not, then I'd like to make a motion to approve the renewal of the billboard rental with Lamar for another two-year period um and authorize for staff to execute the required documentation.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to renew the Highway Fifty Billboard uh contract with Lamar, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, that carries. Next item on our agenda is a temporary utility relief shut-off policy. I would imagine we're gonna have something to do with temperature on that.
Yeah, both in temperature and then the larger, and it sounds like maybe things are working, but you know, with the uncertainty of several relief programs, including LAEP, um SNAP benefits, um just with the ongoing federal shutdown, uh staff met and and looked and and it's normally been our policy, uh even though we don't have to abide by the cold weather rule like some other K C C corporations do, um historically, at least in my time with the city, very rarely have we ever not essentially observed that rule. Um but in this case, looking at just kind of the overall um economic uncertainties that that might be present for the next month or and then the immediacy for some of our residents um proposing to change uh some of our policies uh through the end of February of twenty twenty-six, um which just iterates that the city would not perform physical disconnects for non-payment of any utilities uh during this time period. And that staff be allowed to work out repayment or catch-up plans no longer than twelve months uh with residents on a case-by-case basis uh that we won't assess or we will waive the disconnect fees uh that would normally be assessed on accounts as long as the utility customer made arrangements with the city staff prior to that shut-off date. And then um we currently have a policy that customers can enter into no more than three payment plans a year to try and not let people get too far behind, but that we would, of course, waive that, um mostly that would apply to this end of twenty twenty-five, not knowing where some of our customers might be in that number of arrangements for the year. But we just feel these policies would reassure residents uh that they'll continue to have access to essential water, wastewater, and gas services uh during this time. As always, we encourage anyone that's having financial hardship to reach out to us, um we're we're pretty good about working with people and trying to find, uh you know, a solution that works for the city and them, so.
Are all of our accounts settled from Winter Storm Yuri? But we're close, right?
The vast majority are.
That's a good thing. You know, it's uh I don't have a crystal ball. But what we're going through right now, I suspect we're gonna do this again in January when the if this funding pattern actually goes through, which it looks like it might, uh but it's only through January. So I'd even be willing to extend that past February the twenty-eighth, however, we can always take that action after January, so.
I think we just revisit it when the time comes.
Yeah.
Because, you know, winter actually runs through March, middle of middle to end of March, so, yeah.
Let's see where we're at.
But I would say proceed. You just want to consent, I'd I'd I wanted to proceed.
Is that all you needed on that was a consensus?
Yep.
Well, our next item on the agenda is the twenty twenty-five audit engagement. You council members ought to be familiar with this, we Knutson Monroe does an audit every year on us, make sure Ethan's telling us the truth. Anything you'd like to add to that, Mr. Reimer?
No, um overall, I mean, again, slight slight increase in costs um compared to the previous year, but not out of line of what we see year to year with Knutson Monroe, just as they have their own own costs to adjust for.
Alright, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five audit engagement with uh Knutson and Monroe for an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand and to authorize staff and the mayor to sign necessary documentation.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve the twenty twenty-five audit engagement, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, that carries. That finishes up the new business portion of our agenda, we do have one executive session this evening, and I would entertain the motion for that now.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the Halsted City Council recess into executives this to discuss um contract negotiations, consult with the attorney on matters that would be deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship exemption, K S A seventy-five dash forty-three nineteen B two to include the city manager, the city attorney to reconvene at seven fifty.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to enter into executive sessions session, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we are in executive session.